Okay, six thirty-eight, we're back online. Ready to start our code review project discussion.
Fantastic. CJ, did you have anything you wanted to say, or shall I just dive in?
Um, yeah, you can go ahead and dive in. Um, yeah, Karen is out on some family business in Pennsylvania, so. I may not be as smart and capable as Karen, but you know, if you guys need me last case. You know, options, just look over this way. And if not, I'm just gonna sit here and listen to the, the smart people talk, so.
Uh, you don't, you don't give yourself enough credit. All right. Well, um, it's been a little while since we met because we've been putting together this monster of a document. Um, thank you all, um, for taking the time to review it. It, I know it was a lot of information. Um, it took us quite a while to put together and, and there's still probably, um, I could tell from the comments, a few, few fine tuning. Little bit of fine tuning that needs to still happen to tighten it up. Um. But just a re- brief recap of where we're at in the process. This is the last chapter, so. Um, once we get through today's meeting, I believe there's a few more, a few more, um, sections or not sections, yeah, subsections. Uh, to review, uh, that were at the end of the document. Um, but we're getting very, very close to, uh, final review of all the different sections. And then, um, Karen and I have been going back and. Updating all the previous documents according to our, our previous work sessions. Um, we're gonna send that through a legal scrub through, um, legal counsel. And then, um, when you guys see the final changes, you may see. Some things a little bit different from, um, our conversations, not, not necessarily different direction from you all, but just. When we wrapped this all up and get that legal review, there may be a few, um, additional things that have to be updated slightly. Um, so. Just a heads up on that, but, um, yeah, so that's where we're at in the process. Um. And, uh, we're, we're plugging along, so. Any questions on general process or overview?
Does not look like we have any at this point.
Okay. Well, we'll just march on. I'm gonna share my screen. The next technological challenge of the day. Okay, hopefully that's big enough. I've been playing on my end, trying to make it large enough for everyone to see. And there's a.
Yeah, Jen, I so just see you're, I think most of us are reading it on our laptops.
Okay.
Participants not, at least I find it difficult to read on the screens even with as large.
Perfect. I saw you guys had your laptops in front of you, so is that big enough on your laptop to see?
Yeah, that works fine.
Okay, perfect.
Switched. Oh, well, then it's not. But I can, I can watch here until it comes back up or something.
Oh, weird. It, it just disappeared on your end?
Yeah. Good luck to Karen.
On Don's machine, I think the rest of us are still.
You're okay, okay. Um. Great. Well, we'll dive in. Um, there's a hundred plus comments tonight, so we're back to one of our longer. Uh, comment sessions. I will say, as you can see, as I'm kind of scrolling through here. A lot of these are just really straightforward, so, um. I'll probably skip past them unless Larry and Lee, you wanna highlight anything in those comments that I kind of skipped past. Um, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are the ones I've identified for some additional discussion, and I believe there's still plenty of those to talk through, so. Um. So we'll just start at the top here. Um. Larry had said, uh, clarify that the chapter title, application procedures as shown, or administration as referenced in the staff memo. Um. I went back to some previous notes. We've been calling this application procedures, but I think we did at one time talk about maybe changing this to administration chapter. Do we have a specific preference? And I don't have a preference either way, so.
And just as an FYI for you, Jen, uh, Larry's.
Yeah.
Dick today.
Oh, okay.
We can go through his comments, and then if you guys have, you know, they're great talking points, I'm sure, so.
Yeah. So does anyone else remember? I feel like we did talk about maybe changing this chapter to be titled administration rather than application procedures? Because it also talks about additional administrative kind of topics. But if, if nobody has a preference either way, we'll just pick one and run with it.
I thought administration works better. I thought.
Yeah, I thought that's what we. I think that's what we agree on.
Perfect. Yep, that's exactly what I thought I had in my notes too, so. We just haven't quite gotten back and changed that, so, perfect. Um, those need to show up at the top, okay. Um. Larry had also noted, um, that we may be missing a section on annexations in the list of, uh, additional items to add, so. Um, we can add that. A lot of that is. Based on state statute, so, um, a lot of it is just largely referencing the state statute, but we, um, certainly should get a procedural, um, section in there on that. Um, let's see. So this, this next comment, see, these are some of the ones I, I'll, I'll highlight really quick, but I don't think there's any need for discussion. Um, let's see, number two. Um. He just said, to be consistent, title this subsection Powers and Duties, which is appropriate. This is the one. The Board of Adjustment section is the one section that's a little bit different than others, but for consistency, I thought that was a, a, a good note. Um. And then, is Lee, are you in the room? I can't see behind the giant TV, so, okay. Um, so you had a question, the second sentence starting, review of the decision being appealed is unclear to you. Is it intended to say, in making a finding, the Board of Adjustment must, Adjustment shall rely solely upon the record established before it? And the answer is basically yes, it should be relying upon the original record, um, that the decision was made upon, not any new information. So if you think we need to restate that.
Is it intended really meant you should reword it to say?
Okay, so we can. Yeah, we can reword that, so, um, absolutely. And everything else looked okay in that section for you?
If, if I didn't put a note on it, it must have been a, a.
Perfect.
Already once from another.
Yeah. No, it's a, this is a very long repetitive document, so, um, I appreciate the review. All right, here's another one, um, a little bit later on that page, um, the Development Review Procedures table. Uh, Lee, I believe you and Larry might have both identified the same thing, um, that there should be a table number. I agree. Um, the. Little, um, brackets on either end of the, some of these letters. Was to indicate that it's a public hearing and, oh, it is in the, it is in the legend, okay. I made a note that we needed to make sure it was in the legend, but it is there. This red on green is very hard to read.
Okay, it's in the header. That's why I couldn't read it with red lettering, so it's really.
Yeah. I, I should have caught that. It's, the red lettering is just to show new information, but I probably could have pulled that green back. It will be green eventually, but for this review, it is a little hard to see. Um, so that clarifies that piece. Um, question number five. Sorry, get in the right place here. Um, Larry had said, pending CPC review upon submittal of complete table. Um, and I'm wondering if he was just referring to this note, the review note that we had below. Which was previous to adding this table in, but this is the complete table now, so. Um, I can circle back with Larry if he had any questions on that. Not sure if he felt like there were applications missing, which maybe annexation needs to be added because it's not, um, we hadn't added it before. Um. Okay, here was another one of Larry's that I just wanted to discuss with this group. Um, under sketch plan for a major subdivision. We've added that there will be a review by Prab. I think maybe I need to put an asterix next to this to identify that this is an optional review. Uh, when we met with the Prab, and did, did Karen give you guys a, a debrief on our conversation with Prab? I feel like she might have a few weeks ago, but I'm not sure.
He did. I'm not sure what.
Okay.
Means.
So, um, the, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board said that it would really help them if they could see. Um, applications at Sketch Plan. Uh, they also need to see them at Preliminary Platte, so we all, I think, are in agreement on that, but they said they would really like to see them at, uh, Sketch Plan. So we had talked with them about, um. Trying to strongly encourage people to bring their documents through at Sketch Plan to Prab, uh, for a, a conversation. We could just make that a requirement that there's a review at Prab. I mean, they don't have public hearings or anything, so it's not a super onerous process or anything. But it would.
Assistant with what the Prab was looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, someone's.
Son can give us his input.
Yeah, yeah, the, and the reason on that is just so that. We can maybe give some input earlier before. A developer gets really far into his plans, um, you know, kind of save him some money and such, because those.
And if it's not material, then you guys will just say that was.
Yeah.
And. So, the, the chart kind of reads left to right, so that, that implies the review would occur after the decision, which seems like a pointless step. Should Prab be before Planning Director? So that the review comes before the decision?
It's not a bad, that is, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, we certainly could do that. Messes something else up, but.
That way, if Karen is looking at it, she'd look at it after she heard was perhaps no issue, or perhaps there's something.
Perhaps only in those two, two spots, so it doesn't, doesn't appear to mess anything up.
Right.
A good call.
Yeah.
I think that would be fine. Yeah, it describes it later in the, in the text where Prab comes in with that review, but I think that would be fine to move it over a column. Okay. We can do that. Um, anything else on that one? Okay. These next few were pretty straightforward. Um. Lee, good call on this one. Um, we oftentimes do kind of. Just generalize board review as all your planning commission and city council like hearing type, um, events. Um, but I liked your idea of kind of changing the, the wording on this. So, um. And same, I think Larry had the same comment. Sorry, I should get to the right place on this document. Under Board Approval, we'll call that Planning Commission and City Council Decisions or Approvals or Review. Um. What was this, number ten? Oh, that was still on the table. Um, that was a good call too. Uh, I think, Lee, that was yours, the last three rows of Development Review Procedure table does not show PC Review and City Council Decision. Not exactly sure why, but they should absolutely show where Planning Commission and City Council would come in on review of those applications, so we will, we'll get that noted. Um. Let's see, number eleven, you indicated. Um, when materials submitted to the city by an individual or agency regarding the application. And I think after reading this comment, um, it should just say written materials submitted to the city regarding the application, which is what you're saying. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's no point in saying by an individual agency, which is in all possible places, just take it out and they must have come from somewhere.
Yep. Nope, I agree. That makes sense to me. Um. Number twelve, should the decision be made by the Planning Director or designee? Oh, um. I didn't highlight this one to discuss, but I, uh, just wanted to highlight, we did up in the Review and Decision Making Bodies. Um, say. That, you know, the Planning Director or Designee, and it's intended that then throughout the rest of the document, Planning Director could be or Designee. But if we want to make sure consistently through the document, we always say. Planning Director or Designee, we can. We just tried to simplify that by putting it in the Review and Decision Making Bodies. Um, section, and then. Throughout anywhere that you see Planning Director or City Engineer, any of those, um, review bodies, it would just indicate that that also means they're Designee. Um, so do you have a preference either way?
I, I don't really, I, um, I would, I would think though. If, if it is intended to always be or Designee, and I, I rethought we'd had some discussion of this. It should be very explicit. In each case, the planning where the Planning Director. Um, whatever, find the right wording is. Is, as a decision-making role, it can also be by a desert, by a design, by a designee. If not, you better be doing everywhere very consistently all the way through.
Right.
So can, yeah, can all decisions be delegated or only some?
Yeah.
That would be the.
But if it's gonna be all, and you're not gonna write it in each place, which is probably the safer way to do it, needs to be explicit, explicit, not in some particular cases, it just stated, it's. When it always applies.
Okay. Um, I prefer to do that approach to put, to keep it in the Review and Decision Making Bodies and apply everywhere. And I think what we probably want to do is anywhere that it would just really only apply to the Planning Director and not their Designee. That's where we might wanna. Um, be specific.
One of the reasons we have some different, like, I'm not sure how to word it, is because we don't have all the earlier text. We've seen pieces of it.
Right.
And such too, so there's no way to look for us to look back and see, what does it currently say? This one, reviewing this, I found, very often, I was going back, looking through definitions, and I say, oh, definitions, I've got handwritten notes all over it, because it was discussed.
Oh, right.
Decided upon.
Yeah.
So do we know if there's any conditions where it cannot be delegate, delegated or to designate?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. The only one that, um. Throughout the whole document, uh, most of the review, um. Most of the locations that you would see any kind of review or decision by the Planning Director should be. Um, Planning Director or Designee. This is the only section where I could see. If there are any particular applications that would need to actually be the Planning Director, the Designee could. Um. You know. Review, but, um, I would think the Planning Director would have the final say on administrative approvals, so. This, this one section right here is the only one where I would almost actually say it's actually the Planning Director, not the Designee. But they can designate the Town Administrator, which would be appropriate as well, so. It, it's an, um. Uh, yeah. Let me, let me talk to, um, when we run this through legal, let me run that by them. Because I, I do think the Designee would apply pretty much everywhere, but I, I'm just. Thinking that maybe there might be a couple of scenarios in this, in actual approval, final approvals of administrative applications that may need to be just Planning Director.
Yeah, I, I think what you do not want to do is. Say or Designee some places and not other places.
Right.
Apply that that can't be delegated, but maybe that wasn't the intent. It just makes it a little more confusing.
Yes. Agreed. Okay, um. Some of these were pretty straightforward comments. I don't know if you guys want me to read them, but they're, um. I guess you guys can see them in front of you. Uh, just, just little, little wording changes. Um, this one. Lee, you had asked if this was new, and it is. Item seventeen.
Substantial, or sorry, which, which language of, uh. You had it pointed and you moved it.
It's right here. The burden shall be on the applicant to present.
Evidence standard, sufficient evidence standard.
Yeah.
That's, that's a new one. I don't think you want to do that.
And that is fine. This is under Board Approvals. Yeah, I think, I think this is worded strangely, actually, um, and I agree with you on that one. So we, we want to either remove that or, or write it differently, because it's not the burden on the applicant to present evidence.
Yeah, it's.
It, it. Yeah.
I don't believe our ordinance states the standard. Instead, it tends to be. If the board is satisfied based upon the evidence that's before it.
Right. Okay.
Evidence, substantial evidence, reasonable, there's a whole bunch of things, you don't want to go there, I don't think.
No, and this actual term doesn't even show up in your code currently. This is definitely new language, so we can remove.
Yeah, please remove it.
Okay, perfect. Um, this is one that I wanted to discuss. It's right above that one. Um. This paragraph states a requirement. That the decision shall be in writing and accompanied by statement that explains the applicable criterion standards. Um, on and on. Who prepares the accompanying statement and when? And that is actually a question I'm in a. We may need Karen for this one. Um. I didn't know how this works now, if any of you know, because usually it's, it's just, you know, there's the record that's taken at the hearing, um, which. Should be sufficient, but a lot of times it's accompanied by the, um. You know, it's accompanied by the staff report. And what typically I would think Karen does is after, um. After a Planning Commission hearing, she updates her staff report for City Council, including what, you know, what those conditions of approval might have been, or what the approval, a decision was. Um, so. That's the process I've usually followed, but.
Jen, I think the answer is that the minutes ordinarily drafted in a manner that satisfies that.
Right.
There's not, there, there's not a separate, there's not a separate document.
Okay.
It's not accompanied by a statement that explains the criterion standards and states the relevant facts relied upon. The minutes are as good as they are. Hopefully they do that, but this implies that there's a separate document.
Right.
May I? May I?
Yep.
The only thing would be, it is, does this apply just to planning and city council? Because the Board of Adjustment. When they have an appeal, they actually do have to put in writing. All of this. And they have to do it within ten days. So that's the only caveat to this.
Okay.
And that the Board of Adjustment may have, has, has its own provision.
Right, and I'm fine with, if, if the board, if that's, if that particular thing is in the Board of Adjustment.
And I think, I think it may be, but scrolling through to find stuff is really hard in here, so I don't know.
So, that's, that's just. I know that they have a set legal requirement. On appeals.
And this is under the section Board Approvals, it implies that this only applies to the Board of Adjustment. It's the only board we have, right?
Well, we're changing that title, title. This should be Planning Commission and City Council, which is what this is written for.
Oh.
So that, that will cover that, but, um, let's see. Um. That's helpful. Okay. Which actually brings up the question, I'm gonna, I'll have to go back and look at the, um. The Board of Adjustment section because, um. Well, no, I know this, that, that little piece that we just brought up about the board will show up in, um, Appeals and Variances, which are the last two sections that you guys have not seen yet, so. So I think we're covered there. Oh. Yep.
So is there a specific text we want to put for this? Paragraph A.
I think we just need to simplify this. The approval, approval of conditions or denial of an application shall be.
Shall be in writing, period.
Yeah, shall be in writing.
And accompanied by a statement that's blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, the rest of this, I believe, can go away.
And then if we choose to use a minutes as that. Piece of writing, so be it. And, and a lot of the times with City Council, these development cases have the ordinance that's signed by the mayor that has the conditions of approval listed specifically.
In writing.
So whenever anything is approved by the City Council, we send out, the Planning Department sends out an approval letter, you know, dear. John Doe, you know, your applicant, application for, you know. Taco John's. You know, tacos or whatever, is hereby approved. Please see the conditions of approval and, and the, uh, attached ordinance, so.
Yeah, and I'm almost wondering if we could combine. A with C, because it's basically, it's part of the record. And this talks about the minutes of the hearing. Would that be? Would that be sufficient, or do you feel like it needs to stand alone as just the approval? Uh. Shall be in writing, period, and then the record of decision.
See the old text, because I've got my screen.
There, there is no old text on this one. Um, you, your, your tech, your code does not have this spelled out anywhere in it. So that all this red is, is brand new text. You have some vague language that kind of leads to the fact that there is a record, but nothing specific like this.
The, the only thing. Missing to see that's in A is the actual. Decision itself.
Right. Which we could say, the record of decision shall include the following materials. Um, and, and then roll A under there as one of the, uh, small numerals. You know, record, record of approval, approval of conditions or denial of the application in writing.
All of those and B can go away.
Yes. So maybe condense those two?
For me.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I'm good with one.
Okay. Great. Anywhere we can simplify. Um. These next couple were pretty straightforward. See, moving along. See, moving along. This was a Larry comment that I wanted to bring up for discussion because he, he makes his comment in several locations. Um, and I, since he's not here to defend his statement, but we shall discuss it as a group. Um, moving down into the specific application procedures. Um, his suggestion in several locations is to. Um, immediately following the B, so you can see how we've organized this with A is purpose. And then one would be the actual purpose statement. B is the classifications and then you go into the classifications. Um, and then later on we have, um, you know, C would be procedures. And that's a standalone and then it goes into one and then A, B, C. So what Larry suggested in a number of locations is. That B subdivision classification should have a period and then the, the one should come up here on the same line and say all subdivisions shall be classified either as. Major, minor, or exempt. And we can even say per below, and then you have the definitions, so then these A, B, and C would become one, two, three. Um, and, and the reason that we did the As and Bs as kind of a standalone, more of a title. Is to, to separate them and, and let them kind of stand out, so. I wanted to bring this to you guys because he brought this up a number of times in this section, in this whole, um, next many, many pages. Um, and see what your thoughts are, if you want to have, keep it as the standalone kind of titles. Or incorporate things like this, this language would be up on this line. Right, uh, right behind subdivision classification. Any specific thoughts on that? And I, I see his point and I could go either way, I just, I know we did this specifically to kind of identify these titles.
So one option is to. Incorporate line one. As part of the description in heading B. And then the major, minor.
Right.
Exempt would be moved up a level to be one, two, and three, okay?
Correct.
That's logical. Okay. Thank you.
We seem, well, I, I've looked through all the texts, we seem to use A and B as headers, not.
Yes.
For text.
And that, that's what I'm saying is we, we did that intentionally, we kind of left the As and Bs as headers throughout this whole section. Um, and so I see the logic in Larry suggesting this. Um, and you'll see, this is one case where it kind of could make sense, there's others where it, it makes, um, it, it might muddy the waters a little bit. So, um. It's just a matter of, do we want to keep that, the A, B, C kind of as these headers and the text falls below, or do we want to incorporate that clarification text right up? In the A, B, and C.
If, if we want to be consistent with formatting, then subdivision classifications would be two, but that would not. All under purpose, so you'd have to rename purpose and. I, I, I kind of like it the way it is, be perfectly honest.
It could go either way. Leaving the. A, B, C as, um. Titles works well.
Okay.
Yeah, like.
Anyone that doesn't like it that way that agrees with Larry that we need to incorporate this text?
Don't see any agreement, so I think we can.
Okay. Okay. Well, that, that covers a lot of discussion tonight because there's a lot of these, so we can just kind of hit them up as we go, just to make sure we're still feeling good about that decision. Um. Uh, twenty-six. Let's see. Okay, so this is another item of discussion, um, that Larry had brought up, so. This note in blue, we stated that any standards so associated with these exempt subdivisions would be incorporated in chapter five, which is our subdivision. Chapter. Um. We originally put that note in, um, thinking that there could be additional standards tied to some of these different exemption plat options. But if you go down here. Under all exempt subdivisions include the following, we've, we've defined them pretty clearly here. And I'm not sure that there's actually any standards that act, that would need to go in chapter five anymore, so this may be a moot point. But Larry had said, let's keep all of it here. We're trying to keep this whole chapter very procedure heavy and, and keep any specific standards out of it, so. I just wanted to bring that forward tonight and see, um. See if you think there's anything that could potentially be missing that needs to either go here or in that chapter five subdivision chapter, and I know that's a. Huge question, but.
So what would be the alternative, it sounds like, because you need to have exempt subdivisions as a. As one of the classifications.
Right.
And then under that, it would, it would just be C, chapter five, or? How, how would that? Who are to do it that way?
Yeah, so it, it really wouldn't say anything about chapter five in here, it would just be if there were any particular standards. And I, I can't even think of any off the top of my head, that's why I think it may be a moot point, that note we had in there might be a moot point in the end. Um. This identifies what, you know, what a correction plat or boundary or lot line adjustment or lot combination, what each of these are. And then, um, we do need to add under after sketch plan preliminary plat and final plat, I think we do need to add a section for the procedure for these. Which is a very straightforward procedure. Uh, wait, no, there was a comment about that, but don't we have a procedure in here? All exempt subdivision self submit a sketch plan and final plat, the planning director may waive the requirement for sketch plan. So that's another, uh, question for you guys is do we need a whole process like we have in sketch plan just for these exemption exempt plats or is that sufficient? Um, because you're basically following these different procedures. I hope that made sense, I feel like I just talked to myself in a circle, okay, let me. Um, so I, I think this note here that we put in here is actually irrelevant now, is what I'm trying to say. I think we have all the pieces in here about these exempt plats, I don't think there's going to be anything in the subdivision section anymore.
Well, that's the case.
Then we're good. Okay. Um. So then part two to that is a question that comes up here in a little bit from, I believe Larry. Um, asking for, you know, see how we have a whole section on sketch plan, we have a whole section on preliminary plat, a whole section on final plat. And he said, should we have a section on, um, these exempt? Exempt subdivisions, the process. But it's really stated right here that all exempt subdivisions shall submit a sketch and final plat. Which is already listed below, so I don't know that we need a whole nother section to explain anything about exempt subdivisions. Did anyone disagree with that or have any other thoughts?
We're in agreement.
Okay, perfect. Cruising right along then.
All right, now slows down, I mean, what? Being an exempt. Uh, what does that do other than give the playing director the authority to waive the sketch? Does, is there anything different?
Yeah, you skip the preliminary plat, um, and you go straight to a final plat, which I believe. Let me look up here, wasn't our final plat administrative? Oh, it does go through, you're right, you guys go through a full hearing process, so you just eliminate two hearings, you go just straight to a final plat. In most cases.
And for most exemption plats that we do, like right now for lot line adjustments. Um, interior lot line vacations, that's all done administratively, so that's part of that exemption. Quote unquote exemption plat right now as well, so. You know, if some.
Yes.
Own two lots and they wanted to get rid of that lot line in between, that doesn't have to go to council, that just goes through us.
Yeah, thank you CJ for pointing that out, I just see that now, we, um, we did do administrative for extension plots, I was just thinking to myself, that seems silly that they would need a hearing, but. Um, we are clearly calling that out as administrative. All right. Um. This one we may have to toss back to Larry, uh, I wasn't quite sure if the dot might not be falling in the right spot. And if anyone can enlighten me, he said add required applications and permits in a section, but the, I read this two or three times and can't figure out where that needs to go. The purpose of a sketch plan is for the developer to make known their intentions to the planning director and to discuss any development plans or standards that may affect the proposed development. Maybe he's saying to discuss any. Required applications and permits and the development plans, so I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that and I can reach out to him to find out.
Which note are you referring to?
It's number thirty-one right here.
Okay.
And it, and I'm wondering if the dot is just falling a little bit in the wrong spot.
Yeah, it seems kind of out of place.
Mm-hmm. So I can follow up on that one. Uh, these next few, um. The suggestion was to change sketch plan to subdivision sketch plan. Which I'm fine with unless anyone thinks otherwise.
Why?
I, I could go either way.
I don't have in front of me, is it in our, um. Stefan, how's it in our definitions?
They need the definition.
Yep, sketch plan's the one that's missing a definition.
Linked to this section. Needs a definition.
You know, when you have a definition, I like to use that, that term exactly, so people know.
I think you're going to find sketch plan, people know what they mean, subdivision sketch plan. I don't care. Because it's not, it's S and Y come be nearby.
Yeah, I just. Looking for, we don't confuse anyone because they say, well, that's not in the definitions because it's a different term and. Maybe I'm being too picky, I don't know, but.
No, you're absolutely right, sketch plan is not in the definitions currently, so we need to add it. So whether we, if we title this subdivision sketch plan, then it's going to be subdivision sketch plan in the definitions as well. If we want to just leave this sketch plan. Then it'll be sketch plan in the definitions as well.
CJ, do we see sketch plans for something else besides a subdivision?
I'd say ninety-nine percent of the time, no, um, you know, if, if someone has a proposed development that doesn't include a subdivision and they're. You know, really want a hardcore paper document report from the playing department. Um, that goes over fees and process and what, you know, what kind of reviews. Then, you know, because sketch plans right now are free, it, like if a developer comes in and wants to do a sketch plan, we don't charge them anything, it's a free service that. The planning department uses, so. I mean, I'll throw out the idea of like, hey, I want to build a apartment here, you know, I just don't know what goes into it and with them park and I, you know, I say here, fill out this application. We can just do a preliminary review, we send it up to engineering, utilities, Black Hills Core. Planning and, you know, we can give them a, a report of what, what to expect, some, you know, preliminary comments, so.
So potentially sketch plan is not for a subdivision.
It's definitely not out of the realm of possibility, that's what I'll say.
I think we just believe it is sketch plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm at the definition.
Okay. There we go. This is the one we already talked about earlier, um, let's see, number thirty-nine. Again, where we have procedure as the header and then the sketch plan submission shall adhere to. Um, Larry had proposed moving that text up, but we've all decided to leave that alone. Okay. Same here. And then this is another one of those references of adding subdivision, so I'll make a note that we are not going to add subdivision. Um. Larry's made the comment throughout, and I think this is a good one, under submittal requirements to actually add the title, so in this one it would be sketch plan submittal requirements. Or sketch plan review, oh, sorry, I'm off by one. It was on the approval criteria. Sketch plan review criteria, does anyone have any heartburn with changing that to say sketch plan review criteria instead of approval criteria?
I agree with the change, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. All right. He does is. This one. I think. I think what Larry was saying was just to, to change this number to six oh three oh three oh, which is what it would be. Um, the reason that we had, I should have stated this earlier, the reason we don't have numbers for these last two numerals is. We just wanted to get all of these out and reviewed with you all, make sure they're in the right order before we go through the full, you know, final numbering. So that's why they don't have numbers on the end. But, um. Though these first few seem pretty straightforward. Um, let's see. This one, number forty-eight, um, another good point that we talk about an overall master plan. And this is for the preliminary plat, uh, but Larry had made a comment about. The word master may be confused with, um, other master plans. So, um, we can certainly remove that, I think we need to come up with a different term then. And CJ, I don't know if you've seen any terms, it's kind of like it, some people call it an overall development plan. Um, it's just kind of the, the preliminary plat encompasses the whole, whole development. And your final plat may only be one filing or phase of the development. Um. So I'm very happy to change that term, just thought I'd throw out a couple of options, I don't know if you guys have a particular preference about that.
Unless we don't.
Okay.
For what it's worth, Jen, um, I have heard master plan in the past and here, you know, um, but I think overall development plan makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
It's. In. My next comment refers to the fact that it's called overall master plan, so overall development plan would assume that.
Yes. Perfect, all right, we're going to call that an overall development plan. It's a pretty common term used in the industry, so that, that should be pretty straightforward for folks. Um. Here's our comments about changing the formatting, so we'll just double check this one again. Procedure and then leaving the preliminary plat submission language separate. Um, fifty-two and fifty-three. Yeah, this was pulled in, um, all these submittal requirements were pulled in, the, the black text from your current. Um, current code. And a couple of these. I think it's this one that we have submittal requirements.
His fifty-three is getting at the same point I was making as well.
Yeah.
There's a list which makes sense down through eighteen and nineteen, it says.
Yeah.
Tent that includes. The letter of intent with its inclusions isn't on the preliminary plat, so you have to separate.
Right. Yes, good, your, your comment made sensely, and that's exactly what I was thinking, is we should. Make that a new section that's additional materials. My next question on that is, um. In your current code, it says the letter of attend, intent addressed to city council and planning commission, and typically it's just. Where was I, it's just a, a, considered a letter of intent or a project narrative with all of this information. Um, would you guys be comfortable if we removed the address to city council and planning commission? And just call it a project narrative?
I'm more familiar with that terminology.
Okay.
I'd say yes. And well, it's. It's like they're in agreement, yeah.
Okay, perfect. And that will apply to final plat as well. I believe we have some more. I believe we have some more fifty-seven. Subdivision master plan, which we're actually going to change to our overall development plan. So all of these that say subdivision, it was re- in regards to that master plan, so I'll I'll make sure we have those updated with overall development plan. Add a few of those. Um, this was another one, just wanna kind of highlight it for everybody, um, sixty-eight. Where we require, um, a copy of the accurate names and mailing addresses of the owners. Um, and this is, this is intended for the mailed notification that goes out. Um, your current code does say owners of all immediately adjoining land. This should really refer back to our noticing procedures where we say, you know, three hundred or five hundred feet or whatever the, I think, I think it's five hundred. So I I would like to change this to just be clear that it's whatever that dimension is, and I I don't want to repeat the dimension down here. Um, so that it in in the future, I don't want to cause an issue where it gets changed in one place and not in another, so I think I'd prefer to reference that noticing section. If that's okay with everybody.
I strongly agree.
Okay. Perfect. Um, this, this was a question Larry had at the preliminary plat. Are we really specifying the size, location of water and sewer valves? And I said, no, they. That should probably be removed. It's in your current code as well, but I think that's one, uh, one additional detail that should come through a final plat. Again, there's I, there's a. A number that's floating here, and I think I can figure it out. A letter from the surveyor of the plat stating the total area of lots. I think he just wants to say us to say lots and tracks. The the area of streets and lots and lots tracks. Yeah, it's it's a little. It's a little funky and clunky, so I'm I'm gonna have to update that, but I think I know what he's talking about. Um. Let's see, this is again, oh, this is a a bigger conversation. So in the past, we have removed reference to the comprehensive plan in some of our, um, criteria of other sections. Specifically because it's, um, what do you guys call it? A visionary document or it's it's, um. There's a term that that you use there.
Aspirational.
Aspirational, thank you. I was trying to think of that word earlier. Um, so it is very common and typical for one of the. Criteria of approval of a preliminary and final plat to be that it's in con- conformance with the comprehensive plan. We strategically left that out because of that aspirational nature of the document. But Larry has brought it up in a couple of locations here, so I wanted to bring that forward again. Is there some reference to the comprehensive plan that you are comfortable making? Would like to make, or do you want to to keep that out of the conversation for criteria of approval?
My my personal reaction is that I like having express reference to it as a baseline for people to look to. Similar to the way it's been in the, it exists in the current ordinance now and was here, so I wouldn't be looking for opportunities to take this out personally.
Agree with that.
I agree with Lee.
You can't use words like conformance or something like that, I mean.
Yes.
Back up on page fifteen.
Yeah.
There is a list of, um, entities there on, uh, slow down there a second, um. Cue. It says completed.
Yeah.
The Teller County School District RE two, that should be Woodland Park School District.
Okay, good catch. I'm gonna make a note.
Real quick, a very off topic, Ken Kennedy joined us online. I promoted his him as a panelist panelist. So if you, uh, hear his voice coming from the ceiling, it's.
Very good, Ken, glad to join us.
I'm sorry I'd be late, but thank you, uh, CJ for allowing me to participate.
Yep, not a problem. Thank you, Ken. So, sorry for the interruption, Jen, proceed.
No worries and good call on the Teller County, um. Yeah, there's.
Did you hear the slightly preceding conversation about? How we how we should or if we should include the comprehensive plan as part of the.
Yes.
To re- to review, uh.
Yes, and how do you guys want that to be stated? Should it be say something about is consistent with the comprehensive plan conforms with? I want to be sensitive to that.
Say not conforms, it's.
Yeah, I think consistent is more.
Okay.
This aspirational consistent is a better tr- fit with that than conform forms.
Okay. I agree with that. I think that's a good call.
Possibly, you have the big vocabulary. I don't know, the lawyers get paid for by the word, so I think we should take take the word in, conform out.
Just one word. Okay. I like it. Thank you, guys. I I really do think it's important to have the comprehensive plan noted as well, so I'm glad that came up. Um, let's see. Uh, this was actually, I didn't highlight this to discuss, but it might be worth bringing up. Uh, we had noted kind of more in more general terms, the subdivision shall conform to the provisions, objectives. And policies of all city plans. Adopted in effect at the time of the application. Including but not limited to, and I think growth management might might need to change, but. Um, transportation utilities, capital improvements and downtown redevelopment. Um, Larry had suggested listing out all these very specific plans, um, which I'm fine with. Um, do you, do you all agree that we should list them all or or list it more generally?
Boy, general seems a better way to write it. Yeah, it's also.
Mm-hmm.
It's also if somebody doesn't read, doesn't use one of these plans again, if. That we don't have to go looking for the zoning orders to try and amend it.
Amend it, yeah, okay.
My my only caution is if you're putting in an application and you get dinged because you didn't follow any plans, you're like, how was I supposed to know? Find that. So that that's my.
Well, of course, there's. Sketch plan stage, the city, the planning department will help you find that stuff. As written.
I mean, especially when it says shall conform, so it's a shall statement, so like, oh, I must do this. I must do this, I want to know exactly what I must do.
Which which paragraph are we in now?
Yeah, D, D two.
Oh, that's seventy-seven, isn't it?
Yeah, and I guess I'd be less less adamant if it weren't a shall conform.
Mm-hmm.
The the problem with that is we haven't got even the specific listing now does isn't a specific listing. So to growth, growth management, transportation utilities and central improvement in downtown redevelopment. Doesn't say what the plans are, it says all plans, transportation, downtown development, et cetera.
But not limited to.
It's clearly but not limited to.
I mean, I would never sign a.
So to say.
That shall conform to, but not limited to.
I agree. I feel like we should say is consistent with, just like we did with the comp plan statement, because then the next one is it's consistent with the city parks, trails and open space.
These binding. And then. And D two. I mean, if they're binding, it should be a shall conform, so, but if it's a shall form, then they should be explicit. That's my, that's where I stand.
I would say they're not binding. Um, the only thing that would be binding is following this code, so. Um, shall conform with all the provisions of this code and then should be consistent with all other plans.
Or shall be consistent with.
Mm-hmm.
Shall be consistent with the provisions, objectives and policies of all city plans.
Yeah, if they're softer, it's consistent with not conforms, then.
Exactly.
We can be a little softer on. Having the full list of documents.
Okay, so we'll change it to the subdivision is consistent with. The provisions, objectives and policies of all city plans. Maybe all other city plans, we could probably eliminate a lot of the, um, rest of that sentence.
Think that works, you just put a period after is consistent with or shall be consistent with and period after plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the word current, we're throwing away adopted and ineffective time.
Yeah.
They're not currently adopted, they're not city plans, so.
Right. Okay, I like it. I can, I think that keeps it simple. Um. This was another one that Larry brought up in a couple of times, and I I do feel like this sentence is still a little clunky. The proposed development, and I'm in, um, D five right now. The proposed development and use shall conform to the provision, standards and requirements of this code. We could stop right there. Um, but we went on to say, and all other city regulations adopted in effect at the time of application. Including but not limited to zoning subdivision, utilities, buildings and construction. Business regulations and engineering specifications per the following. Um, I think highlighting building. And engineering could be important, but Larry's point was. We just said other, you know, we've al- already said it needs to be in conformance with this code. And then we go on to say zoning and subdivision, which is this code.
I think we could stop after and other city regulations because the code is not always completely conformed to the latest.
Okay.
Regulations, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry, we decided we're gonna stop after requirements of this code.
No.
Or after the city regulations.
Yeah.
And all other city regulations, okay. That's what I thought you said, and then my brain thought maybe you said something else.
I haven't read this. Can I ask you a question real quick, Jen?
Sure.
Municipalities that you've worked with, is it like very consistent with saying current code or current regulations? The only s- res- reservation that I have in not including that current is. Code changes, the comprehensive master plan changes, you know, plans change, so. If a development gets approved and then the plans change, it could potentially. Put them out of compliance, right? But, you know, it'd be a grandfather.
Yeah.
For lack of better words.
Really want to say current, you want it, it's it's the applicable code. Yeah. I'm not saying add applicable, but it that's what it means.
That's the time of application.
The time of application, yeah, that's what.
Yeah, we could just, we could actually keep that in effect at time of application for all of these.
Just, yeah, just for what it's worth, I just kind of like that. In time of, you know, this application.
It's, well, just say, is it time of application approval? Like, not time, not a time, if you're gonna say it, it's not the time of that.
This was this was somewhere, no, this was somewhere else that, you know, where do we snap the chalkline? I thought I recall that they're held accountable for whatever the current rule of the land is. Up until it's approved, and then it can be grandfathered.
Okay.
That's what I recall, but but. But doesn't mean that it's true.
I know. In the architectural world, when codes were changing, say, regional, there was a big deadline to get it in before July one, so that's. And just get the smittle in. And so there might be some code modifications and plan changes, but it was to get that. Date of application is when the codes. That were in effect apply. And so maybe Jen, you can tell us otherwise.
Yeah.
What I'm used to happening.
No, I'm also used to it being at the time of application, um, because if your application is in. Um, in review for, say, a year and the code changes within that year. It's at the time that you actually submitted that application. Um, I will double check that, um, just to make sure that's how, um, it's being administered. In the city, but, um, it usually is that time of application.
And if you, if Don, if you think about it from the developer's perspective, you know, part of our job is to be like, you know, friend developer friendly, we, you know, they're our customers, right? So if they spend a million bucks on plans and then revisions from our engineering department and utilities and all this stuff, and then the day before city council, we change our code. Then they have to repay their engineer and their architect, you know, so. So something to think about. So that's why, you know, application, I think is the.
Yeah, I've always. Heard it from the date of application, so.
Mm-hmm.
The important thing to me is clear, one one noise map.
Yeah, sorry for the derailment, Jen, but.
No worries.
Well, and ju- just, we kind of went gloss over it, but. Under five I, I, I through IV, um. Sound like we're th- we're throwing those out, and I think it's okay because it's everything there seems to basically restate. Must conform to current code. Um, but I just wanted to bring it up in case. Maybe there was something unique there that needed to be preserved over.
Those requirements.
Yeah.
Stated elsewhere.
I think so.
Yeah, all these requirements are part of the code. Um, this just gets a little bit more granular. Uh, we actually had quite a conversation internally about this as well, um. Uh. Myself and one of my staff members, uh, she said, you know, this this seems repetitive, it's just stating the obvious. Um, so we had already condensed this a little bit from what we originally started to put in here. Um, I'm happy to read through that one more time and just make sure we're not missing anything because we could, we could say. You know, stop the sentence at and all other city regulations per the following, if we really need to have that detail in there.
You know, just referencing the portion of the code that stipulates all this.
Right.
Per the following is is very odd language. I've seen it a couple of places here. I would, I would avoid it.
Okay. And why, why would you avoid that?
Um, I haven't seen a lot of ordinances or statutes that ever say that. It sounds informal.
Okay.
But. To to. Hit the period and delete everything after the period, long before we got to the per the following, so.
I I think you're right in this case.
In this case, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we're okay. Yeah, I think we're.
Quite about another eight words.
Um. Yeah, that's interesting. Um, I do, I do want to hear a little more about this perspective on per the following. Is there another way to state that that makes? Uh, that that is more formal?
I would dread if you gave me a particular example where you want to use it, I guess I could address it.
Uh, well. Yeah, I like this one where we have a list below, say, say for this example, you know, we're, um. Right here under five. Pretend we were going to keep this buildings and construction, business regulations and engineering specifications. And we want to say per below, um, how how else would you state that from your perspective?
In accordance with the following?
In accordance with the following, okay.
There's different ways you can do it.
Okay. I'm sure I've stated it other ways before too. I just was curious what your perspective was on that.
In this case, we're planning to remove those, right?
Just. We are.
City regulations, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Just, that was my own sidetrack. You, that was my my opportunity to sidetrack us a little. Um. All right, what do we have here? Oh, this is another one of the formatting ones that we have decided to leave. The way that it is where we would just leave B procedure and then one the the text. Um. Same here. All right, here's, here's one, um. Number eighty-two, this gets really technical, but. Talking about the boundary survey monuments, so those are the monuments they set around the perimeter of the property. Um. Larry did have a question, you know, are they really setting these boundary monuments prior to final plat? And and I don't know if any of us in the room will have an answer to this, but I thought typically they do set the boundary monuments for the perimeter of the whole property. Or at least make sure that they're, um, the pins are set. For individual lots, I would say absolutely not. They're gonna set those as they, you know, as the. Final plat is approved and they start to do construction, but I didn't know if anyone in the room had any insights on that.
I think it just depends if the, if the parcel in question is platted or not, like if it's, uh.
Mm-hmm.
That parcel is not platted, then it's not going to have any. Um, you know, markers, right? It's a meets and bounds property, therefore a surveyor's never been out there.
There may not have been that.
I mean.
Requirement, you know.
Right, so.
Right.
But definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely not on the individual lots if we're doing a major.
Right.
Until the approval of the final plat.
Agreed, that's exactly what I was thinking. Um, and this is in your current language, so we may need to just revise that a little bit, um, and speak to. Uh, when the property, when the survey monuments need to be set. I know I did an annexation many years ago. I know I did an annexation many years ago. And the property corner was not identified, and when the surveyor went out, it was in the middle of the street, like at an, in an intersection. And when they did the initial survey for the, just for the uh meets and bounds for the annexation um application. They, they did end up setting that pin because it hadn't been set there. But I don't know if that's something that they just did as a courtesy, or um if it's a requirement, so. Maybe we can, I have some good friends that are surveyors, I might even throw this question out to them and see what's common practice. All right. There were a few comments in here, um throughout this whole section. See, I'm not even sure where we are, final plat, so we're in the final plat requirements, um there were a few. Comments saying, um you know, where we talk about street right of way or easements to also add in the word tracts. So we're talking about right of ways and tracks, easements and tracks. Streets right of ways and tracks, so that makes sense to me to include. Um tracks as part of that language. Oh, and then this was a funny thing in your current code. Uh it talks about naming right of ways. See, where is it, eighty-eight? Names of right of way widths for each street or other right of way, and I think what they meant to say is just. Identify the right of way width. Not the actual name, you wouldn't have a, you might have a name for the road. And you'd have a width for the right away, but you wouldn't have a name for the right away width, so. I got a chuckle out of that one. Um, let's see here. These were all very straightforward, just little clerical edits. And here's another one of those notes that might be in the wrong place, because it didn't quite read right. But I think we can figure out where it goes. Any required deeds or plat dedication? Or dedication or parks? Of parks, recreation areas and open spaces. And Larry had said add tracks or public, for public or private, so. For dedication of. Tracks for public or private parks, maybe that's what he was trying to say. That might make sense. But we'll figure out where that's supposed to go. Um I agree, Larry and Lee, you both brought up this um dollar amount that shows up in here, and I agree, it should be um. Just referencing the city's fee schedule that updates that fee annually. Any questions about that?
That mean, right, there's two things to do, two ways to look at it. You can write dollars as it may be adjusted from time to time in the city's schedule. Or you can say just reference the city's schedule, assuming the city's schedule has an amount in it for dollar. Okay, well, you have to, that's the logic way to do it, but it means we're, we're laying on the city council an obligation to remember to do that.
Right. I'll double check the fee schedule, um.
I was gonna say, I don't think we have anything on the fee schedule currently. No.
We don't for this?
Not for, no title insurance, no.
Okay. You know, actually, it's really. Uh we may have to ask Nina about this one, because I actually feel like, um. I'm not sure I'm used to seeing an amount for title insurance in a code.
It'll be more appropriate than a fee schedule. Oh, it would be the best, the best way to write it is in such a.
Yeah.
City may require from time to time, and something like that. And in the same schedule where we have the, the amount for. You know, parks and all the different, where it should all be in one place.
Yeah, and the amount required by the city.
The amount required by the city. Somebody, somebody have to figure out where that is. CJ could make it up.
Oh, yeah, one million dollars.
Oh, I could, I couldn't, I can't spell. Simplify. Okay. All right, we can, we'll track down what should be the right, um. The right reference there. Um, this is another one of those where. It's the letter of, um, letter of interest, where am I, one oh one? A letter of intent addressed to city council, and we had decided earlier to call that just a, a project narrative, so. We'll make sure that gets changed here too. All right. This was a Larry question that we may need to clarify. It says the final plat shall comply with the preliminary plat and all associated conditions of approval. And he asked the question, does this include meeting the preliminary subdivision plan review criteria two? I think we could add that in here, I mean, this is, you know, if you're meeting the preliminary plat, then you're meeting all the preliminary plat criteria, but if you, if you guys think we need to. Clarify that, that it complies with the preliminary plat and all criteria of the preliminary plat approval. We can certainly add that in here.
Would there be any criteria that's not included on the plat, preliminary plat?
No, because your final plat should one hundred percent conform with your preliminary plat, so if you're meeting all the criteria for the preliminary plat. And you're meeting, you're in conformance with your preliminary plat at final, then you should be also meeting all that criteria. But we don't need to restate all of that criteria. A lot of final plats just say in conformance with the preliminary plat period, and they don't say anything else for criteria.
Does anything we're talking about now affect the, the, how one looks at? A situation when the final plat varies in some manner from preliminary plat?
That's actually a really great question, because sometimes you may have a little variance in, um, and not, not, not variance as in the formal variance process. But just a little variation in. Um the actual lot layout, when you start to do the grading, you know, some lots may get a little bit bigger. You may lose a lot, um just to, just to get everything in. And that's all within the, the realm of expected for a final plat. Um but we could add some language in here to state that, you know, you can't change. Um I have written and seen language before that if it, if you're changing beyond a certain percentage, it's usually ten percent of the kind of. Parameters of the preliminary plat, um then you have to go through and get a new preliminary plat updated.
Oh, we don't have the final plat, everything's gonna be defined anyway, it's just a matter of making another copy and writing preliminary on it.
Yeah, right.
And but, but, I think the key, the key question is, is the city in a position to evaluate whether or not? The change is satisfactory or not. If somebody comes in with a final plat that differs from the preliminary.
Mm-hmm.
Suppose staff will note it to planning commission, will say, oh, that's trivial, or it's not trivial. It's a problem. And then with our recommendation, the city council have the same opportunity.
Which has happened in the past, if you guys remember on um the Haven apperits.
Yes. We didn't do a new preliminary, you said.
No.
Changed your. Change to go back to the preliminary.
Exactly.
Okay. And if they had said, no, we really need to do it this way, then you probably would have said, well, then you need to update your preliminary. Maybe, I don't know. So it sounds like your, your process is working without having to state anything like that. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I'm not drafting, because I have to look at the.
Yeah.
The other to see on it, but as long as the city retains the ability to be the one to decide, or is it okay?
Okay. Okay, I've made a note about that. And we'll make sure that the language is clear, uh with that, with regard to that. Uh let's see. This was a question that Larry posed. Uh one oh five. Oh, um. It, it's not one hundred percent related to this item, I think it was kind of a, a thought that came about because of this particular line item. Um but if a minor subdivision requires the installation of utilities, streets, sidewalks, et cetera, does it then become a major subdivision? And the way that I've always interpreted this is that your. Minor does become a major if you're dedicating land. Um but it got me to even thinking, you know, you're gonna need to stub in utilities. Build streets and sidewalks, whether it's minor or major typically, so, um so I would say no. It's not just the installation of these that triggers the major. Which made me go back to our definition of minor here at the beginning. And I believe we need to update it. Because we say here. A minor subdivision includes proposals to create fewer than four new lots, parcels, tracks, spaces or interests. Unless such application proposes or requires public infrastructure to be constructed. In association with the subdivision, in which case the subdivision shall be classified as major. And I think the intention be- behind this language was true public infrastructure, like a new public water main or um public street. But, um. That, that's just one thing that I think we might all need to be cognizant of is, is it. Construction of the infrastructure? Or the dedication of the land, and then therefore the construction that is associated with it? So. Um that might be more of a conversation between Karen and I on that definition, but I just wanted to point that out. Unless anyone has any suggestions or questions or thoughts on that.
You pointed out the prom, public infrastructure isn't defined.
Right.
And if you rewrite it in a way that doesn't require a separate definition, just say what you mean.
Okay. I think it does need to be rewritten then. All right. Because the thing, the, the trigger that triggers it to a major subdivision is the, I mean, you guys go through public hearings for both, I believe, anyway. Um but it's usually just that the, you know, the city needs to accept those. Public dedications, and that, that's what really. Um makes, even if you have four lots or less, if you have that public dedication, that's really what triggers it to go to be elevated to major. Um anyway, we will update that. Um, let's see, one eleven. Oops, sorry, skipped ahead. Now I don't even know what this comment was, all final plat shall be recorded per procedures. Oh, add a new subsection, final subdivision plat shall conform to all city adopted plans.
Be consistent with.
Right, exactly, I would agree with that. Um. And what we were doing here was trying not to repeat, since we're saying it has to be. Conform to the preliminary plat, we were trying not to repeat all of those. City adopted plans, city, you know, all those different pieces. If you guys feel otherwise, I'm, I'm happy to add that it. Here again, that it needs to be consistent with all other city plans. But it feels like it's inherent in the fact that you're conforming with the preliminary plat, which states all of those items. Does that make sense, or do we need to add those back down in here? Those criteria. Or is everyone's head swimming and you're saying, I don't care, Jen, no.
Don't seem to be cloud of opinion, being, don't add.
You're a quiet crew tonight, I will say that. Okay. Okay, one twelve. Same, same thing, so I think we've just decided we're not adding any new criteria, it's in the preliminary plat.
Yes.
Okay. Um. One thirteen. So we are in final, oh, conditional use permit now, we've moved on. And there was a comment from Larry, a new subsection and renumber subsequent subsections accordingly to add. The proposed development shall conform to, okay, so this is again referencing this, the comp plan, so. I think just to confirm, we can go ahead and add a, the section in here that says it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Do you understand my comment on one fifteen?
Yes, let me read it again. Yes, I did, that it's, um, it, it's not really a part of this list, it needs to bump out one.
Yes.
Perfect, yep, that made sense to me. Um, this one sixteen is similar to what we talked about before. Um this whole, actually, this whole list is gonna go away, because we can simplify this to say. Um that it shall conform with the standards and requirements of this code and all other city regulations, period. Like we talked about before.
Okay, eight more words.
Eh, well, yes, as adopted and in effect of the time of the application. Okay.
Nine words.
All right, um. This was one, I, I made a note to double check this. Um Larry had said this section. Should substantially conform with the conditional use permit regarding format and content. It, it should have, so if something got off, and I know they're each their own kind of unique. Um types of applications, but we'll double check and come through here and make sure that the formatting is consistent. And I think he's probably talking kind of down here. Um in some of these later, later sections or portions of this section. Um, let's see, go back to Lee's question on one eighteen.
Yeah, this is a use, what's a ten percent change in special use?
Yeah, so I think there.
I think it's a question of materiality or not, it's, there's no.
It is.
Put on how much. If it's, if it's a heliport, does it mean you can add? You can add ten percent of the flights coming in and out, I don't know what it means.
So it's tied to this amendments, and, and the formatting looks funny in this, um. Track changes, it's gonna, I think it'll look a little bit more clear when it's not tracked like this. Um but it's speaking to amendments or modifications of the permit and site plan associated with the special use permit. Um but that's a good question, now that I even say that out loud. It's, it's saying that no more than ten percent. If nowhere than ten percent of the site plan changes. Then it can be administratively approved. Um but maybe that needs to be clarified, because you're right, the way, even just saying out loud right now, it's ten percent, it sounds like it's ten percent of the use that changes.
Yeah. I'm not sure that ten percent of square, the square footage that was devoted to runway for the heliport, is that what we mean? I, I. Minor might, I'm, I'm just not certain it's helpful.
Yeah. Okay, um, yeah, we can. Is there a different metric you'd like to use, would you like to have some, it, it's nice to have a trigger in these to say. If it's a minor, basically if there's just minor clerical kind of edits. Or just, you know, the building moved over five feet, but all the parking remained, all the landscaping remained, whatnot, that you're. Or just, you know, the building moved over five feet, but all the parking remained, all the landscaping remained, whatnot, that you're um. That it can just go through an administrative approval, but do you want to see? That removed, or do you want to see a, a different threshold or defined better?
Difficult to quantify.
Yeah, it is.
Usually when somebody comes in the first time, they kind of max out what people can tolerate. We can always get so much more. I understand the need for some kind of. Line to cross when it goes to. Public hearing versus administratively approved, but I'm not sure how we define how much that change is.
Yeah.
Add two more.
Okay.
This is. Yeah, that should be almost an administrative kind of thing, you'd think. Yeah, but, but, but then. Yeah, but you don't know.
Maybe that's something we can talk about with Karen, or you can talk about with Karen next time. Or Jen, because I just don't want to put words in her mouth, but one of my thoughts is maybe, you know, like have the planning director just make that decision and not put. A specific threshold in there. I mean, without Karen here, like I said, I don't want to put words in her mouth and make a.
Yeah, there's something that gives her a right when she, when she based upon. Facts funds it to be insubstantial or some.
Right.
Perhaps something like that.
And if the planning director deems it substantial, then you guys in city council will hear about it.
How to define what that threshold is is very difficult.
Okay. I agree. And ten percent is a common term or common threshold used in the industry, but um, it is often. We have this conversation all the time, with ten percent of what? You know, how, how do we define that? So. Um, we'll talk to Karen about that one and see how she wants to word it. I think that's a great, great thought. Okay, um. See, city, the adding reference to the comp plan again, we've decided we will do that. But I don't know where that one twenty is. Oh, down here. Whoops. Okay. Add another discussion in here. Oh my goodness, we're at the end of our list, how did that happen? Um. One twenty-two, add new section and renumber, the proposed development shall conform and be in compliance with comp plan, oh. I think we've decided we're going to do that anyway. But let me just make sure I didn't miss something in that section. Twenty-one. So twenty-one is that same conversation we've had before about being consistent or being conforming to this code and all their city regulations. Adopted in an effect at the time of application. Um, so we'll make sure that language is adjusted. And then we'll update these per the followings. And then these last two were pretty um, just kind of notes, so. All right, we've made it to the bottom of the list. Now, do we want to go back and look at anything that we didn't already talk about?
Don't see much enthusiasm.
Come on, application procedures are so fun, aren't they?
Only other places where the planning director has some discretion to approve administrative things and. I, I think we can find consistent. Description of that.
Ability to refer to the planning commission.
Of defining what that threshold is, I just.
Yeah.
I know this comes up more than, more than once, and just this place, we should look for it and be consistent, that's all I'm suggesting. Uh, in my quick search, I couldn't find it, so.
Now say that one more time, places where the.
Where the, where the planning director has the um, discretion to approve. I'll say changes.
Okay, kind of like the last thing that we were talking about, that ten percent, yeah, okay.
So wherever that is, we can find that and.
Just be consistent with right, how we say.
Yes, okay.
But I couldn't find it in my quick search.
Okay, we can do a, a search as well and see, um.
I know there's some specific language in the sign code right now, um, but I actually believe that it's the city manager that can um, approve. Minor variances administratively to the sign code, but again, that's specific metrics, you know. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what the specific numbers are, but for, like for uh, this conversation, you know. They can enlarge a sign by ten percent of the allowable square footage, right? So, um, but for language purposes, I think we could look at that sign code.
Awesome.
I think that's eighteen, like three nine. Off the top of my head.
Okay. So maybe look at, look at sign code language.
Uh, eighteen four eight. Dang it.
And right when you just had them all memorized, CJ, they're all gonna change.
Oh, man, I know. It only took me two years.
I'm working on a code right now um, in Idaho and the planning director's been there for, I don't know, eighteen years or something. And it just dawned on her today, she was like, oh no, all the references I've memorized are going to be gone, so. Okay. Anything else on this, this part of this? Chapter? All right.
I'm seeing it, Ken, are you happy with what we got?
No problems, you guys are doing a great job, thanks for covering for me.
Okay.
Awesome, well, I much, very much appreciate your review and thoughtful comments as usual.
Yes, thank you, Jen, appreciate your help. Well, then I guess we're done with our work session. Uh, CJ, any reports on what's going on?
Um, nothing very specific, I just want to let you guys know, the next scheduled planning commission meeting is on Thanksgiving, so. I expect you all to be here.
You're bringing the turkey?
Yeah, well, Karen actually will bring the turkey since she's not here now. So obviously, we'll see you guys on the twenty-eighth, so the next uh, planning commission meeting will be December twelfth. Um, right now, we have tentatively scheduled for another code update, we do have some um. Blood hazard development permits in the works right now that are being reviewed um, by our third-party engineering group, so. Um, may or may not see that this year, um, so we'll see, but keep that in the back of your minds.
The twelfth, not because twenty-sixth. Is that a meeting?
Um, the twenty-sixth, we're canceling that since it's the day after Christmas and um, a lot of people take that day off. Including myself this year, so.
So we have one more meeting this year then?
Yeah, so the last meeting of the year, um, yeah, will be on that December uh, twelfth. So. Real, real quick, um, six point oh two point oh five zero B. Gives a pretty nice list of conditions for administrative approval. We could perhaps reference that.
Very good.
But uh, yeah, I was just gonna say, other than that, we have a few people with their terms coming up, so um, I sent you guys all emails, so. Um, we would love to have everyone back if, if they're willing to do so, um, so, yeah, that's all I'll say.
Okay. Again, CJ, any comments, any questions? No?
No.
It's eight twelve, we're now adjourned.
I'm good here. Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.